Good evening again. I'd like to call the committee the whole for the village of Cary for Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. To order with roll call, please.
Betts?
Here.
Cavelli?
Here.
Weinheimer?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Collier?
Here.
McAlpin?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move to the public comments where anybody is able to address the committee the whole on any matter that's not on the agenda for this evening. Does anybody want to discuss this, anything besides what's on the agenda? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments. I'm going to call a public hearing to order to consider an approval of variants for an additional wall sign and variants for an illuminated canopy signs for Thornton's gas station to be located at 104 Northwest Highway. Brian's going to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. The request this evening is for the future Thornton's gas station that's going to be constructed at the corner of Janus Cut Off and Route 14. Under our current codes, a gas station is permitted use on the property, so they've submitted permits to go through and develop the site. However, as part of the proposed project, there is certain variations that they're requesting for the signage for the specific property. Specifically, they're asking for a variance to relocate one of the permitted signs, which would face Janus Cut Off Road to the rear of the building, and also proposing to variances for having signs on their canopy to be illuminated. This slide here summarizes the layout of the property and also the signs that are proposed as part of the project. The property is permitted to have, based off its development on the corner of Janus Cut Off and Route 14, it is permitted to have two monument signs, one oriented towards each roadway. So they're proposing to have two signs on the property. They're also permitted to have two wall signs, again, one facing each roadway, so one towards Route 14, and the second towards Janus Cut Off Road. They also are permitted to have canopy signs on the fueling canopy, but per our code, those cannot be illuminated, so they're seeking a variance this evening to provide internal illumination to those signs. The first variance that's requested this evening, again, they're permitted to have two wall signs on the building. Those are to be located facing the roadways. The variance that they're seeking for the additional wall sign would be to relocate one of those signs to the rear of the building. As the way the building is designed, it will have entrances both at the front and rear elevations, so the sign is proposed to be moved from the west elevation to the south elevation that would face the vacant parcel that would be remaining after this project is developed between it and the railroad tracks. So that sign would not be visible from adjacent roadways, but if anybody were to park in the rear of the facility, as additional development occurs in the site, would be able to identify that building with Thornton's through that signage.
Brian, can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
So currently, they're permitted two signs?
Correct.
What difference does it matter, what face it's on?
The way the code reads, they're permitted one sign per street frontage. So, and with the blow up here-
Oh, I see.
Sign A would face Route 14-
And then the other one would-
Inside B would face toward Janus Cut Off. So all they're doing is relocating that one sign they're permitted to the rear of the building. Additional signage that is proposed on the canopy over the fueling, they're permitted per code to have signage on the face of the canopy. There are provisions as far as how large those signs can be, which cannot exceed 20% of the canopy surface area, and would not be in addition to other signs that are already permissible for the building that was affronted on that roadway. So the maximum size of the two signs combined would be 72 square feet for a sign facing out towards Route 14. The variance that they're requesting in this case is with the three signs that are permissible. They're, under our code, illuminated, internally illuminated signs are not allowed by right. They would require variance, so the variance that's requesting this evening is simply to provide internal illumination of the three signs that would be on the faces of the canopies. This slide here shows a couple of examples of other facilities that they have within the area and neighboring communities. You can see on this image on the left, there's a sign that would be above the main entrance to the convenience store, and then a sign on the canopy, which would both have provided internal illumination. The second location has similar signage where this property is on a corner, which has frontage along two streets, also has a sign facing each roadway, and then also a sign above the main entrance into the convenience store for the gas station. Under the village's sign code, this application was submitted prior to the adoption of the unified development ordinances, still being reviewed under our previous provisions for signage. The variant standards, which are summarized in this slide, are for consideration for the committee the whole to recommend to the village board possible approval of the requested variances. Essentially, the relief does not alter the character of the locality, really proposed in harmony with general purpose and intent of the signage regulations for the village. In the subject case, should the committee the whole determine if the signs comply with the variant standards, they should recommend approval of the proposed motion, which would include approval of a variance for an additional wall sign and three illuminated canopy signs for the Thornton's gas station to be located at 104 Northwest Highway, subject to three conditions. One would be that the additional wall sign would be installed on the rear elevation of the building facing the adjacent vacant parcel on the Union Pacific Northwest Railroad right of way. Two, that the canopy signs on the fueling canopy may be internally illuminated, provided they comply with all other code provisions for placement and size. And then three, all other signs proposed on the property self-still comply with the village's signage requirements. Staff will be happy to answer your questions. You may have, regarding the petition, the petitioners also here can provide additional information regarding their request.
Wouldn't they need a variance for the two monument signs, both on 14? I thought they only could have one on-
They're permitted two monument signs. One has to be oriented towards each roadway. So the existing signs, as far as how they're shown on the exhibit, the one sign toward Janus Cut Off would need to be oriented so it would face towards Janus Cut Off. But they would be permitted two signs in that frontage along that area, as long as they're both oriented, one towards 14 and one towards the adjacent roadway.
Regarding the illuminated canopy, have there been any other requests like this that have come before the board?
Not before the village board.
Any other questions?
Why did they come with sign variance before they came with the plan?
The plan was already submitted. It's a permitted use within the zoning district, so a gas station within the B2 district is a permitted land use. So they have submitted plans for the development of the gas station, which are currently under review by the community development department.
Okay.
There is no other formal approvals that are required of the village board or zoning board to approve the project, as they comply with all the setback and parking requirements for the project. So this variance is essentially the only relief that they require for this proposal, for the project to receive board approval.
With the variance, if it's approved the way it says with illuminated signs, is there restrictions on how bright they can be or anything, or how much light they throw?
Yeah, there's limitations from a property line standpoint, as far as how much illumination can be at a property line standpoint. The maximum illumination you can have at the property line of any parking lot lighting example is half of a foot candle. So at the property line along Route 14 or Janus Cut Off, they would not be allowed to exceed that. So under the permit requirements for the development of the site, we'd review a photometric plan to make sure that all lighting on the site complies with that requirement.
I have a couple of questions. I know this is about the sign, so I don't know if we can even talk about some of these things, but I look at this site plan, and I'm a little confused, because I look at what is this big parcel behind her that's blank? It's a big rectangle. I mean, why are they going all the way down there if we don't know what's going to go there? I mean, is whatever they're going to put there, is it automatically approved? Is it automatically part of the gas station?
No. So from the site layout standpoint, tonight, the main focus is on the signs is where the request is. From a design perspective, the entrance, which is in this location, essentially that point is being established by IDOT for where that entrance can be to the site due to its proximity to Janus Cut Off. So this location kind of defined the lease area, the site that they're purchasing, from a development standpoint. Then there is areas on the property which would potentially have the development capability for other uses in the future, but any sort of modifications to the site would require, under our new regulations, board approval for consideration due to the total configuration of the, what's known as referred to as a selkie property exceeds the two acre requirement would require plant development approval in the future. So if there's a major change to the layout of the site beyond what is proposed here, additional user is proposed in this location, or additional fueling ions, just things along those lines would require future approval by the village board.
So as it stands, and help me make sure I'm understanding this properly, as it stands right now, this is a three acre parcel that they're looking at.
Correct.
So under our new UDO, it would have to go under our PUD, but because it was before the UDO was enacted, it doesn't have to.
Correct.
So as it stands right now, we don't know what's, we have no idea what they're proposing here, whether it's a car wash, whether it's anything, but I see parking, I see, but if they come up with something, anything, they're going to have to come to us for approval, basically, if it's not being done at the same time.
Correct. So what's proposed, or what is designed for the site right now is the gas station with the canopy and the convenience store, and the associated parking improvements related to that. There are other parcels that are planned for future development, not specifically on this parcel that's being created, but others, users are under negotiations for different portions of the site. That would all require, if I'm going back through the plant development process for approval, this specific use, since the permit was actually applied for, under our previous codes, it's a permitted use under our zoning ordinances that they're allowed to, as long as they comply with all the regulations, can pull permit specifically for that use.
And my other question is, all the way to the right budding off to, budding to Janus Cut Off Road, is there a reason that there's, was that just not buildable there, or is it, they just wanted it symmetrical, or what? I mean, that's a lot of, there's a fair amount of space there that's vacant. Is that something that they would have to upkeep?
Yes, it would be-
It's just vacant land?
As part of their property, they would be responsible for maintenance of that.
I just, you know, I would be curious if the petitioner would consider, I still think that to me looks like two signs on 14. Just to me, it does. I would be curious if they would be willing to push the one sign off a little bit. I just don't want, I feel like that is your entranceway as you're coming into Cary, and I don't want it to be like, Thornton's Thornton's, like a big, wah, here it is. And I'm not, Thornton's does a great job. I've gone by numerous of their gas station, I made some trips by there. I know that Dale, I believe you made some trips by the-
Yep.
To check it, I looked at it at night to say it's not, to me, it's not illuminating to a point where it's anything, it's very, very calm. You know, it's not a, it's nothing that I find offensive. But I, you know, I look at the future development of this whole parcel. So that's my concern with two monument signs there. I guess I'm just thinking, is it really necessary to? I'm curious why they think they need to have two monument signs? I was just curious.
The petitioner can answer that too, they're here as well. From an orientation standpoint, under our code, they would have to be oriented towards each street, so the way the plan is currently showing, within perpendicular, that one towards Janus Cut Off would need to be rotated slightly to face more Janus Cut Off, so it wouldn't be one after the other facing Route 14.
So we're not talking about anything else with regards to the development today, correct?
No, we're just discussing signage.
But if you have additional questions, can Ellen ask them?
Sure.
Even if it doesn't pertain to signage?
I mean, do we, are we supposed to be asking those type of questions now, or should we be waiting, Scott? I mean, I just-
Well, the purpose of the, they don't need any other approvals from the village board. They only need approvals for this variance. So any other questions you, after, if this passes, which I'm pretty sure it will, any other questions can be directed to staff, because then it's at the staff when they go through the regular process. If you want to ask questions, you certainly can, but-
And we are still working with them on the site plan, both community development staff and engineering and public works staff.
Right. So I mean, asking a question about video gaming? Is that just a staff question?
Is there anybody here that can answer that?
I was just curious if they're, you know, I know when you have a three acre parcel, there's less restrictions, correct, on video gaming?
Specifically for video gaming, there is a definition within the Video Gaming Act for a truck stop, which one of the requirements is a three acre site. However, there also is a requirement for separate commercial fueling station, which the site plan does not have.
Okay.
And there also are requirements for the amount of fuel that is sold to qualify for that. So this, under our code, zoning code, the site classifies as a gas station. Under the Video Gaming Act, there's provisions for defining what a truck stop establishment that could have video gaming, but obviously, any licenses issued by the board would be at the discretion of the board for video gaming terminals. But this, under our code, is a gas station, so.
Is there any more questions from the board?
I have a question. With these monument signs, are these the signs that also show the price of gas?
Correct. Yes.
So those are the, what Cs are, the Cs are?
Correct.
The Cs. So we'll have two prices of gas showing.
Yeah, in the packet, I apologize, I don't have an image of the monument signs, because there wasn't a variation requested for those this evening, but the signs comply with the maximum size for a monument sign, and then would have both the name of the gas station and then fueling pricing on those signs. But that information should be in your packet.
Are there any other questions by the board at this time? In continuing with the public hearing, I'd like to ask if there's anybody, the petitioner, if there's anybody else that has any reason to discuss this, stand and we could swear you in. Is there anybody else? Is the petitioner here? Could you come up to, please?
Mr. Attorney, just a second. Are you swearing at anybody right now who wants to speak? Do public speaking?
Yes.
You want to speak, Christina? I know we were kind of-
Well, you could just get sworn in. Anybody that you don't have to talk to-
If everybody wants to stand up, just swear in.
It's because it's a public hearing, so you can choose to speak or not. Just raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth during the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Miller, 65, Highway 14, Cary. Some of my concerns are the plan that they bring up. It says, "Gas station," it says "Fuel center," which doesn't say anything else in here, or Thornton's have seen in the area. And the three acres seems to be a waste of space for a gas station. I know there's going to be a gas station there, as evident as only spot along 14, but one, I think the village is a very unique opportunity here to, every gas station in the world probably wants to be there, so the village should make sure to get the best bang for your buck. I'm afraid a three acre parcel gives them a lot more leeway to do other things on that property. It's not needed to just put a gas station on. So being a conspiracy theory guy, I just hate to see they have that much leeway to do things. If it was 1.75 acres, you have much more control over it. And does Brian have the final say in what gets put on that property, or does the village board have any input into it, or is this up to community development? You can answer these later on to it, I just give them a hole. But it seems to be our entryway into Cary, and to have that many illuminated signs kind of looks like Vegas coming into town. I know Cary's not a big sign person. You got to have signs to get your business advertised, but seven signs on 14 seems, or six signs on 14 seems pretty extreme. And then the one facing, like Julian property, which is straight across the street, seems to be unnecessary, because everyone sees it as us, unless you drive down 14 and look quickly to your right. And illuminations on the canopy seems excess, too. That, I've not seen a Thornton's, I haven't seen a mile away from their signs they have for their fuel and everything else. I think they have great, you know, the two monument signs, it's what it's going to be, but I'm afraid the canopy signs are a little over the top, and I appreciate anything the village could do to help keep Cary look as good as it does.
Thank you. The petitioner, would you like to come up and, want to give us a little bit of a lowdown of what you're asking for and the reasons why you're asking for some of these, the variances?
Sure. I think Brian has done a pretty good job.
Could you state who you are?
Oh, sorry. Troy Pyonk with BSTP Midwest, we're the developer representing Thornton's. The staff's done a pretty good job explaining our requests. The first request, again, permitted by right to have the two wall signs, one facing each roadway frontage, but it's really a function of, with this type convenience store, there is also a second access point to the building at the rear. Call it a dual entrance store, so that sign, simply moving it from one side to the other, is kind of serving dual purposes. One, we're allowed to have it. Two, but we're placing it by the entrance, treating it more, a little bit more as wayfinding signage as well, to help customers when they pull in. Again, there's four sided parking for this particular facility. The other, with the request for the illuminated canopy signage, that's, you know, simply that's visibility, that's their branding. It's, I would say relatively common in the last two and a half years, 18 odd sites like this, none in this immediate area, this is relatively standard, to have the illuminated canopy signage. And again, we're allowed, we're not exceeding any of the square footages, whether it be the wall signage, the canopy signage, or the monument signage. The one comment about the two monument signs, we'd be happy to, that is shown inaccurately, that should be turned, and we'd even be happy to push that a little bit farther along Janus Cut Off, so it doesn't look like bang, bang, there's two signs there. It's there to serve that purpose for Janus Cut Off, and we'd be happy to push that back over there a little ways.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner?
I'm just kind of curious. One of the things that Mr. Miller asked is, why are you putting Fuel Center on there? I didn't even think about that. I think you asked a question, Dave mentioned some question about your sign, why it says instead of "gas station," or why does it say Fuel Center? Is there rationale that you might be able to explain as to, is that just more the way that these are going these days, or?
Oh, I see what you're talking about here. Okay. So it says Fuel Center on it right now. That normally would be where the Thornton's logo-
That's what I figured.
-name would be. So right now, you know, honestly, we're working with Thornton's, but if something happens with them, we've got other national providers or Fuel Center operators-
Go in there.
Correct. So that was really just a, as right now, it's Thornton's, but yeah.
Makes sense. Place holder, yeah. Did that answer your question, Dave?
I could just, real quick, too, on the open space, you know, there's, again, Brian mentioned that's, IDOT really is dictating the geometry and layout of the site. You could probably get way overly creative, but the access points are where they are, which sometimes that creating that amount of open space is a good thing. And there's a fairly substantial amount of vertical fall across this site, so you kind of need those open spaces to be able to adequately do your grading and trying to get your site work to balance out, to try and reduce your-
Really, my thought was, I didn't know if Thornton's had already decided whether or not they were going to look to put a car wash in there. I didn't know.
There's no plans for that right now.
Okay.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
It's not really related to the signage, but in our packet, not on the thing that's being shown up on the board here, it shows you can access the site going westbound on 14. IDOT approves that?
Yeah, left in turn in?
Yes. That would be IDOT's jurisdiction.
But there won't be a turn lane, it'll just be the, there's four lanes there now, so a person in the middle lane can turn left to get into the gas station, then?
Yes, from 14, yes. That's currently a three quarter access. That'd be a left in, a right out, and a right in. There'd be no left out of the site onto Route 14 from that point.
So if you're going eastbound, you can turn into the site. If you're coming out of the site, you can go eastbound.
Correct.
Yep.
If you're westbound on 14, you can turn into the site?
Yes.
So you can stop on 14 and have your clicker going and-
Yeah.
Hold up traffic?
There's a, there's a, there's a proposed left turn lane.
There is a center lane there? Oh, okay.
It wouldn't be holding up traffic.
I see your point.
Okay, I didn't realize this third lane.
Yeah.
Anything from this side?
I have one more question. So I drove to a couple stations and looked at them and see the signage and the lightage, how they have them. This doesn't show which signs they're proposing. Some of the canopy signs are just say Thornton's in white and are lighted. Some are Thornton's lighted white, and then a red line illuminated around the whole canopy.
Oh.
When is that decided? Can I ask Brian that? When is that decided, or is that part of this?
Well, the canopy, some of the Thornton's canopies have a red LED band, I think, that goes around the canopy. So we have not requested a variance for that, because the zoning code specifically referenced the internal illumination of the sign itself.
Of the sign itself, always. Okay. Thank you.
There was another question that was asked by, about who has the final determination of what goes on here. If there's anything in addition to what's being presented right now, has to come through the village board. So what's being presented right now is just a gas station. It's not a truck stop, it's not a truck fueling station. This is simply a convenience store with a gas station. That's what we're looking at right now. The only action we're looking at tonight is to get approval from the committee to allow the seven signs. That's the action that we're looking for tonight. There's no official action, it's just a consensus to move it towards the village board at the next village board meeting. So just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Anybody else have any other questions with regards to that? Regarding the sign placement, I'm going to go with moving the one sign at Janus Cut Off in 14. You're going to move that down, a little bit further down on Janus, maybe centered or something that would be off at the corner.
Absolutely.
With regards to the illumination, you're going to comply with our ordinance with regards to where the luminaries will end up at the foot of the property.
Absolutely.
Anything else? I'll start with Trustee Weinheimer. Are you good with the way it's being presented and the changes?
I don't have any other questions.
Are you good with the way it's being presented right now?
Yes.
Trustee McAlpin?
Ham.
Trustee Kraus?
Yes.
Would this be okay to put on the consent agenda at the next village board meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. This will be on the consent agenda next village board meeting. Thank you. That concludes the public hearing at 6:38. Next item up for business, a discussion regarding an operation of a non-highway vehicles on streets within the Janus subdivision. Chief Finland?
All right, thank you. Okay. It's just messing with me a little bit, that's all. The connection to the display. But I was asked to do some research and make a presentation in regards to the use of non-highway vehicles on roadways for municipalities. Specifically, we're talking about golf carts. So what we need to do is talk about what a non-highway vehicle is. So anything in red here, all train vehicles, golf carts, off-highway motorcycles and recreational off-highway vehicles are considered non-highway vehicles. That low-speed vehicle that's not a red font is something that we'll talk about later, because it's kind of associated with the use of- because it's kind of associated with the use of a lower-speed vehicle or transport on a roadway, and it's generally for roadways underneath, under posted speed limits of 35 miles an hour, although low-speed vehicles require under 30 miles an hour unless the village or the municipality that has control over it, roadway, allows those vehicles to be used on highways or roadways that have a speed limit of 35 miles an hour or less. So this is what, when we're talking about non-highway vehicles on roadways, as I indicated before, the, the non-highway vehicle that's being a golf cart right now would have to be operated on a street with a posted speed limit of 35 miles, 35 miles an hour or less. The operator of the non-highway vehicle must have a valid driver's license. The village or municipality or political subdivision that has, I think townships can do this as well, can by resolution or ordinance allow this type of vehicle to use their roadways. However, we have to, we as being a municipality, must determine the volume, speed, character of the roadway, and determine if it's safe to travel for these type of vehicles. When we talk about golf carts, and I think sometimes individuals that make these inquiries are talking about golf carts that they might have, that they picked up, that are actual golf carts and aren't equipped to be driven on the street. So the Illinois Vehicle Code requires that these golf carts, if they're to be used on the streets as non-highway vehicles, have, they have brakes, a steering apparatus, tires, rearview mirror, red reflectorized, a warning device, front, both front and rear, slow-moving emblem on a rear, a headlamp that eliminates, oh, emits, I'm sorry, white light for 500 feet, tail lamps that emit red light for 100 feet to the rear, brake lights, and turn signals. So now, we're not talking about a regular golf cart that you would use on a golf course, we're talking about a vehicle that's equipped to drive on a roadway. And then, what I'm always asked about these things sometimes, and I guess that's a dichotomy, but what I'm asked is, can you be, can you drink alcohol when you're driving a golf cart? Because you can't on a golf course. And the answer to that question is, if you use it on the highway, you cannot drink alcohol while you're operating this vehicle, number one, and number two, you're subject to being arrested for driving under influence of alcohol if you're using this on a roadway. That all applies. And it also requires mandatory insurance. Any questions in regards to that? Because it's a little bit more complicated than just saying, go ahead and use your golf cart on a roadway.
We have any questions on this?
Do we have anything in place for the properties that are in Cary but are part of Trout Valley? Because Trout Valley allows golf carts.
Trout Valley is a different entity, so they allow it.
A part of Cary, Trout Valley that's in Cary, do we have anything in place, or those people can't have a golf cart?
Oh, no. If the roadway's dedicated to the village, then we would have control over that, and we would have to allow that. I'm going to let.
In addition to that, the neighborhoods, or the portions of the neighborhoods that are in both Cary's corporate limits and part of Trout Valley's association, those roadways are all private roadways, so there aren't actually any Cary public roadways in the Trout Valley Association limits.
Okay, so those people can have golf carts, but we don't have any restrictions over them?
Not only can they have golf carts, but they don't have to comply with the Illinois Vehicle Code as it relates to the equipment.
With the lights and everything.
Exactly. So if the, if it's a, no, actually, yeah. So they wouldn't have to have all that equipment. So what I did do is I went to Fairway Golf Carts over on Borden and took some photos of the golf carts that they have there and some pricing. So the picture on the left, the picture on the left is just your normal everyday golf cart that you might see on a golf course. And the price tag on that was about $4,100. The golf cart on the right is the golf cart that's properly equipped to be used on a roadway, and it's $7,800. So there's a big difference between a properly equipped golf cart and a golf cart that's just used off-road in like a, the capacity of a, you know, golf course or maintenance, grounds maintenance, things of that nature. So these are some of the things that you have to have on there, is going from left to right. You have to have headlamps, and then down in the bottom, it shows that they have both taillights and brake lights that they work. And then going up again to the right is a rearview mirror, and you have to have rearview mirrors. And then, interestingly enough, the village of Fox River Grove enacted an ordinance that allowed golf cart carts to be used on their, on some of their roadways, not all of their roadways, but some of their roadways, excluding, I believe, Lincoln and Route 14. And they require seat belts. So that's another option that has to be included if you use a golf cart that's properly equipped in Fox River Grove. And then the final picture to the right is the turn signal indicator, and then it has a horn on it. So that has all those things that you need to drive this golf cart on a roadway. This is just the, from Fairway Golf Carts, their order sheet, and it has some of the prices there in regards to the extra equipment that you would need to add to the base vehicle or base golf cart, so it could be used on a roadway in accordance with the Illinois Vehicle Code. So I'm going to talk a little bit about low-speed vehicles as well, because they're kind of, the same, a little bit of variation here. Low-speed vehicles can be used without the village doing anything. They can be used on roadways under 30 miles an hour because they are, they comply with the Code of Federal Regulation 571 dot 205. And they have to have all that equipment that we just spoke about, but additionally, they have to have a vehicle identification number on them as well. So these can be driven, as it indicates, on roadways that are posted 30 miles an hour or less. They can cross streets, and they have to cross an intersection that has a speed limit of 45 miles an hour or less. The, you know, government, we can, as a village or municipality, prohibit the use of low-speed vehicles on roadways, but then we have to make sure it's properly signed. So we have to make sure that that's done. We can also allow them to be used on roadways that have a speed limit of 35 miles an hour or less, so we can add five miles an hour. Again, the operator has to have a valid driver's license. It's subject to all the rules in the Illinois Vehicle Code in regards to operation, it has to have mandatory insurance. And in this case, that's different than the golf cart, is you have to obtain title and vehicle registration. So off to the right there, you see what the vehicle registration would look like for a low-speed vehicle. And I put the provision of the Illinois compiled statutes that indicates the cost for that registration is $18 a year. And there's a picture there of low-speed vehicle that I found on the internet, they run between $10,000 and $12,000 for these type of vehicles. And in addition to this, when you do register your low-speed vehicle, you have to sign an affirmation that indicates that that's just exactly what it is, and it can't go over 25 miles an hour, I believe is the requirement for this affirmation. So just kind of talk about some of the ordinances that you might have heard of, or, you know, that can be referenced. In Fox River Grove, this is what's found on their website, and it indicates that you can't use it on Route 14, and you can only use it on a very short portion of Lincoln in that jurisdiction. But again, you have to meet all the other requirements that we spoke about in regards to the Illinois compiled statute. And again, in addition to all those other requirements, they require seat belts for every occupant that would be on that golf cart that's used in that village, and they have to be inspected. So it's subject to inspected, inspection by the Fox River Grove Police Department. The village of Huntley, you would expect that the village of Huntley might have something similar to this because it is, they tend to be used in the Del Webb subdivision. And again, similar things are indicated in regards to the use of these type of vehicles on their roadways, and they're restricted to certain areas, that being the streets within that Sun City-Del Webb community. And then again, you can see that the bottom bullet point makes it sure, makes it clear that you are subject, 11-501 is driving under the influence, and then 11-502 is open transportation of alcohol. Actually, it's 11-500, but 11-501 is DUI. So now we're talking about what area is requesting the use of these non-highway vehicles on those roadways, and it's the three streets that you see here circled, Marquette, Mildred, and Cary Avenue, and it would be Cary Avenue that would be east of Cary Point Drive. These particular roadways are posted 30 miles an hour on Cary Avenue and 25 on Mildred and Marquette. The Public Works Department did a study of the traffic there and found that the 85th percentile, which is the mark that's used by engineering, and I would have to defer to Director Morimoto in regards to establishing speed, but they tend to use that as a benchmark for speed. And the 85th percentile was 36.5 miles per hour with the average truck speed at 27 miles an hour, and the average car speed at 31 miles an hour. The average daily count for a weekday was 523, and weekend is 518, which means to me, if you're taking this in regards to analysis, that all those trips that are going there are all originating, with the exception maybe a couple for the workday, are originating and returning to that area, and that's because it's a dead end, it doesn't go anyplace. The character of the roadway is a two-lane roadway without curves, and it's about 20 mile, 20 miles, 20 feet wide. And then it is, in both mine and the Director Morimoto's opinion, it would be a candidate for these non-highway vehicles to be used on these roadways based on the character of the roadway, the volume of traffic, the type of traffic, and the speed. Did you want anything? Nope. So if there's nothing else, I'll be happy, or Director Morimoto would be happy to answer some questions as it relates to the presentation.
We did have one resident email, trustee McAlpine, Dan Anturski in favor of this with a description of her neighborhood, and I'll just, the Jandis subdivision, a resort to our community, is a welcoming place to live, raise a family, enjoy the Fox River fishing, boating community, park and beach, picnics, and socializing with friends and neighbors, and it continues on the benefits of adding a golf cart. So this will be added into the record?
Yeah, and I guess what I wanted to emphasize is that they have to be properly equipped golf carts.
Right.
They can't be just the regular golf carts. Absent a private roadway, because then we don't have any jurisdiction of that private roadway.
This is a very unique situation for the village, it's a, would be an ideal situation to allow this. I don't think that would, it would work in any other of our subdivisions that we have right now. Any questions with regard to this, or does anybody have any further comments on this?
That was my question, so we don't allow this anywhere in the village currently?
No. This would be an isolated subdivision.
Those speed vehicles can be used, and we, there is one, I believe, that the resident is from Trout Valley, and they do occasionally drive upon roadways within the village, I've seen it. But they can use that because the roadways that they're traveling on are 30 mile an hour or less.
Yeah. Have we gotten requests from other subdivisions on something like this before? Is this something brand?
We will now.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because if you do have another area, I mean, I'm assuming the same thing will be done, a traffic study.
I think we'd want to look at it on a case-by-case basis, but you're exactly right. I mean, we allow it down there, I'd assume that we may get another request come up from another area, so. But we'd look at, look at any, there might be other candidates out there, so we'd have to evaluate those.
Right.
I think the chief would have something to say about that as well.
Well, I was going to ask too, if it had any impact on the department, just enforcement or anything like that.
I don't think so. We wouldn't be getting into any pursuits, right? Because they're only going 25 miles an hour.
But just educational piece of knowing that you need all the headlamps and all that stuff.
That plus, the way they're marketed, these vehicles are marketed, is they're supposed to take the place of your regular vehicle to run errands. So, you know, and they kind of orient the marketing toward people that want to reduce their carbon footprint, and the cost per mile, it's in the pennies for these vehicles. They don't go very far, I think 80 miles on a charge is what I've seen when I was looking, doing some of the research. But you're right, you know, it depends on what they want, that being the non-highway vehicle user wants to accomplish with this vehicle. If they want to stay in their area, that's fine. If they want to go to the grocery store to pick up items, I don't know that that's going to work because that's not, you know, the intent here in regards to the character and types of roadways they have to travel on.
So, but you bring up a good point. So let's say that someone that lives in that area wants to travel to the downtown Cary portion. Are they then limited to certain streets when we pass, if a resolution were to pass, is it specific to certain streets?
Yes.
You can do it that way. But I went out there to look, and it's 30 miles an hour on Cary Avenue, Jandis, all the way into the downtown area. So, you know, if, a low-speed vehicle could absolutely travel from this area in the downtown area, and we wouldn't have to do anything because it would be a vehicle that's permitted to be used in that manner.
Okay.
But a golf cart's different.
The golf cart's different.
Yeah, golf cart's different.
Okay, but I'm saying, again, if we're looking at this and we're looking at potentially passing something, would they be limited to certain streets for usage?
Correct. That's what we're recommending.
Yes.
I got a question. So they have to comply with everything that's on there? Who's going to check to make sure they are, and how are you going to keep track of that?
If a police officer had occasion to observe it being operated without those, that equipment, they could initiate a traffic stop and they could enforce it. It's a code violation, so they would get a regular citation, they'd have to go to traffic court, you know, they'd have to post bond, they'd have to do all that.
You said Fox River Grove requires them to register, correct?
No, inspection.
So they're inspecting them and giving them a sticker and say, you already passed this, here's your.
Yeah, I don't know the process that they use, but it just indicates in their ordinance that they have to be inspected, or they're subject to being inspected. And I imagine if we had village stickers, you'd make them get a village sticker, right? I mean, because they're using the roadway.
So you know they comply.
But we don't do that with vehicles.
Right.
You know, when we see a violation, we stop them, you know, and we don't have them illuminating registration or anything like that. And you don't need seat belts on these.
Right.
It's just the requirement of that particular municipality.
And in terms of how we look at these, we would recommend that they're looked at on a case-by-case basis, each on their individual merits and based on the criteria that the chief had mentioned. So for this particular example, in this request, we would recommend that you consider it only for specific roads, so specifically this subdivision, Cary Avenue, Mildred Avenue, and Marquette Avenue, not allowing the non-highway vehicles, so the golf carts on, you know, the roads outside of this neighborhood. As you've mentioned, the low-speed vehicles, they can't do it by right now, but we're talking specifically about the non-highway vehicles. And based on this analysis, as the chief summarized excellently, the, this neighborhood has very low-volume traffic, so 500 cars a day, so it's considered a very low-volume local roadway. There is no cut-through traffic, being a dead-end area. The speeds are obviously, 85% of the cars measured are all going within five miles per hour of the posted speed limit, so there's not a speeding issue in that neighborhood. So it meets and checks kind of all the boxes that we would consider is suitable for this. If other neighborhoods requested it, they would be held to the same standards and judgment of the traffic criteria. Most other neighborhoods, even with lower volume, are probably going to have some degree of cut-through traffic, pedestrian traffic, other elements that would likely affect our analysis and our recommendation. But this particular subdivision is configured uniquely and has a unique character, and in our opinion, does suit it if you, if the village board wants to consider approving it.
And I look at it, I mean, this was, I had brought this up because I was approached by a couple different individuals that live over there, and the realities with them being on the river, it was more a hassle for them to say, we have to take the car down, to bring everything down, to go fishing, to get on our boat, or, you know, this would be a lot, and much easier, less expensive, a more eco-friendly, eco-friendly option for them as well. So, but I agree, it has to be looked on a case-by-case basis, and with it being a dead end and no through traffic, I think it's the perfect opportunity to try and enact something like this over there.
And the other thing that...
And the other thing that both myself and Director Morimoto looked at was second-division motor vehicles, trucks. And the only, from what we determined, is there's a parcel of property that's being used by a commercial entity that is east of Cary Point Drive, but it doesn't go into that subdivision. And that would probably account for the difference between the 523 and the 518.
Okay, makes sense.
Any other feedback? Questions, concerns? Everybody okay with this? Okay? Consent agenda next board meeting? How much longer do you need to put together a resolution or ordinance to get that done by next meeting?
I have counsel to help me out with that, so.
Okay, and the consent agenda next board meeting. Thank you. Next, let's talk about McRide Dial-A-Ride Service. Are you doing this one, Courtney?
I am.
All right, rock and roll.
All right, thank you, Mayor. As the Village Board is aware, in March, part of the budget discussions at the Budget Workshop, the direction to staff was to provide an opportunity for funding for participation in the MC Ride Dial-A-Ride Program. The staff, prior to initiating the application and the process through the county, through McHenry County, to start that application to the program, we wanted to provide the committee with a summary of the MC Ride Program itself, as well as the other current Dial-A-Ride options that are out there, and just to ensure and get concurrence from the committee that this is still the direction of the board. And then at that point, we would move forward with that application process. So I'm going to turn it over to our management analyst, Courtney Sage, to give the presentation on Dial-A-Ride Programs.
So just a brief summary of MC Ride itself. The general public base fare is $3, and then you do see a reduced fare for seniors as well as disabled. And it's at $1.50. That's only for the first five miles. Every additional mile is the 25 cents. The average trip length is the 5.6 miles. However, that is looking at the entire Dial-A-Ride map, which I'll show you on the next slide. They said that most of their trips are quite small, as they usually remain in that community. For the Village of Cary, you could anticipate perhaps longer rides. For example, if someone was going to MCC, or if they were just trying to get to somewhere in Crystal Lake. MC Ride is funded partially by federal funding, and then municipalities have an annual cost. And then the county also puts money forward for the program. You have to schedule rides one to 24 hours in advance. We see 11 municipalities and eight townships are currently a part of MC Ride. And there are the operating hours, six to seven, Monday through Friday, and then nine to five on the weekends. Here's the service map. You can see Crystal Lake, Fox River Grove are currently a part of the program. McHenry and Huntley, Algonquin and Lake in the Hills currently are not. And you can also see some of the, they've highlighted some major points, the stars, those are direct locations that MC, or MC Ride will go to. One of the current programs that we have in Cary is through PACE. It's the Southeast McHenry County Bus, and it services an area in Cary, Fox River Grove, Crystal Lake, and then some unincorporated areas along the border. I have a map as well for this one. Their base fare is $2 with seniors and disabled at $1. And then they have a student-based fare also at $1. We weren't able to find information on if that's certain miles or if that's the total fare. You do have to schedule one day in advance, and their hours are slightly less at 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and they're not available on the weekends. This is their service map. The crosshatched area is where they actually service, so for the most part, it does look to be Fox River Grove, Cary, and Crystal Lake. The other option currently available is the Algonquin Township Senior Transportation Bus. It's available to seniors and disabled residents who live within Algonquin Township. They are able to request a ride to go anywhere within the township, as well as three hospitals in Huntley, McHenry, and Good Shepherd. And they are at $2 for their fare, with additional stops being 50 cents. And they are available Monday through Friday, 7 to 4.
Algonquin Township, that's a flat rate of $2? They don't add on for?
It is $2 for wherever you're going, and then if it's a round trip, you pay $4.
Okay, good.
Currently, we have about 95 Cary residents who have or still do use this bus.
Algonquin Township?
Yes. So one thing we wanted to point out is, in the McHenry County Transit Plan, they had a conceptual future fixed route. It would be a PACE route, not a Dial-A-Ride route. This was just a concept. None of these locations or the route are finalized, but it focuses on Fox River Grove and then Cary. If the county was to move forward with creating a fixed route like this, staff would be able to provide input on the route, on the stops. For example, we could recommend some Crystal Lake stops. This is just the conceptual route schedule they had. You'll see that they wanted to hit both the Cary jewel, as well as the Fox River, or Fox River Grove jewel, both metro stations, and then the Cary-Algonquin industrial area as well. But once again, not finalized, it was just a concept the county put together. Here's just an overall summary with a table that kind of shows you the difference between the three options. I didn't include the fixed route, since that's not a for-sure item. So you'll see that for the current options, we have the Township Bus and the Southeast McHenry County Dial-A-Ride. The village does not pay a cost. If we were to be interested in MC Ride, it's about $22,839. That's for the, this 2019 year. It is based on per capita and need, so it could fluctuate. Currently Cary is seen as moderate need, so it changes. There's low, moderate, high, and very high.
Do we know what some of these other communities that don't participate in it right now are at as far as need, like Algonquin and Lake in the Hills?
Yeah, so Algonquin, I believe, was in the low, and Lake in the Hills is moderate.
Okay.
If there are any questions, myself or Director Morimoto can answer.
Where it says PACE Southeast McHenry County Dial-A-Ride, that's currently happening right now in Cary as well.
Yes.
Somebody can utilize it, and they don't have to be over 60?
No.
Okay.
And I have seen that bus at the metro station in Cary.
The PACE?
Yes.
I just saw it today on Spring Street, drafting somebody off. You call in advance, and they'll pick you up.
So potentially, could a student who, you know, is not in a bus route and has no way to get to school, could they utilize the PACE Southeast McHenry County Dial-A-Ride?
One thing we would need to look into is if maybe there's an age to get on the bus. I'm not sure if there's a requirement there.
Are you talking about college-age kids?
I'm talking about school-age kids.
School-age kids?
That would be the only thing we would need to look into.
The information about this program was a little bit harder to find, so we did reach out to an official from PACE for, to obtain that map, for example. It wasn't on their website, but we, they were able to share that. Some of those other details, they're not on the website, so we're not certain at this point. We'd have to find out, but typically, I guess, yeah, we had to find out if there is a minimum age requirement, if they'd let minors ride unaccompanied in these services. I don't know that MC Ride does either, actually. We'd have to verify that.
I have a student that uses PACE, but it's a unique situation, so I'm not sure if they're all allowed.
What is the county, or are they in their investigation towards this?
For the?
Conceptual plan?
Yeah, the conceptual plan.
That was, I believe that plan was just posted in 2018?
Yep, as part of the recently approved transit plan, the county put that out there. The first steps towards that, as part of that report, they would want to consider this in a future year, but subject to looking at the performance of another, what they call circulator route. So they're trying this concept out first in the Harvard area, so they're looking to convert and proposing, I don't know if it's certain yet, but proposing to convert a fixed route up in that area to a circulator route. And they want to see how well that performs, and that performance would then determine if PACE would want to, and the county would want to try that concept, kind of on the opposite end of the county down here. So it is something that would be, I believe, in their plan a few years out, two, three years out, before it would be considered.
I think they had proposed for 2021.
I believe you're right, yes.
So I had a question about the cost. How do they determine who's low, moderate, when you were mentioning the different communities? How do they come up with the, is Cary considered moderate users?
Yes. That was based on the American Community Survey for, I think it looks at both the income.
And the aging population.
Socioeconomic factors, similar to what the census provides.
Okay, so it's just a best guess, really?
It's a, our planner's not here, but it's an educated, professional planner's best guess.
Yeah, yeah. There's no, I'm not aware of any outreach that goes on. I think they're just looking at data and trying to surmise that and make a good estimate, so.
Well, and since, if we were to implement this and we'd be new to the program, is that number negotiable at all? Because we don't know how many people would be using this program?
No. So it's per capita. It would be prorated, so given that there is a certain amount of time, if we were to, if the Village Board gives us the direction to proceed, we would have to make an application that would go before, I believe, McHenry County's Transportation Committee, and then eventually get approval, consent from their county board. So there'd be multiple steps involved with this. From all indications, based on the fact that there is moderate need, based on the data that they have before them, all indications are that the county is encouraging and welcoming our application and participation in it. But then we would just pay, have to pay for the $23,000 or so, just the percentage of that year that would be remaining.
So is it a contract each year you would sign with them?
Yes, we would have to renew and pay the updated annual fee each calendar year.
And if we did it this year where it was prorated, would they then provide us any data as to how many Cary residents are actually using it?
Yes, we are able to request that.
To see if it's, you know, in our best interest to renew it the following year?
But going into it, there's obviously no data available, aside from the demand that Courtney was able to get from Algonquin Township on that particular service. PACE was unable to provide us any real data on that service's demand level and use. But just based on the socio-economic data, I mean, that moderate category that's in the transit plan and in MC Ride's categories, that does give us some indication that there's a likelihood that it would be utilized. But yeah, until we get into it, that'd be the only way to know.
So according to this, if I were somebody that was going to utilize like a McRide or PACE or Algonquin Township, the, since the, if, and that's, you know, senior yet, close, not yet. So PACE would be, that's still the cheaper option for somebody. It's $2 for public, a dollar for senior or disabled. All you'd have to do is a day in advance, and it would be cheaper for the residents. And they run longer during the day, from 6:00 to 5:00. McRide is 6:00 to 7:00, so it is, McRide runs longer, yeah. So it's about the same.
And they have no weekend availability, that's the big one.
And then the McRide would cost almost $23,000 a year.
And the other difference is where these two buses are able to go as well.
What do we do to publicize, like, the PACE or the Algonquin Township for, do we do anything? Do we get requests for how people get to and from places?
I've never gotten a request for PACE. I don't know if.
My five years, I've had one request or inquiry about MC Ride. I haven't had any requests about PACE or the Township Bus Service. I think people, given they're run by PACE and run by the Township, they go towards those websites or those agencies to find information about it. I do believe we have a link on our website about the Township Service. I don't know if we have one about the PACE. It was a little more difficult to find, but we will be adding it, obviously, now that we know it's available.
I don't think there's a lot of residents that know about the PACE. I mean, even we had to dig to find the information. I think it was hard to, or nonexistent on their website. And so there's things that we can do, obviously, to promote that. It's an existing service out there that we've started to learn a little bit more about, and we can get that message out here. And I just want to remind the board too, that we included the cost for the MC Ride within the budget this year. That was a request from the Village Board. But I want to remind you that every year, the last four years that I've been doing the budget, it gets harder and harder every year to balance the budget. This would come out of our general fund, which, you know, we have to make tough decisions every year, and we have to keep that in the back of our mind of, you know, is this one of those priorities that rises to the top above some of these other priorities that we have on the list?
What, and I appreciate that, Jake, because that's kind of where my mindset is with some of this. My first thing is, before we go, this is just my thought on it, before we go and invest $23,000, which could increase, and I realize that we prorated this year, but I'm just talking about, that's a big capital investment. Before we do that, I personally would like to monitor and see if we can publicize some of this a little bit, and see if we can meet those needs, if those needs are out there. I had spoken with Algonquin Township quite a bit when we were doing our budget session, and they did give those figures about how many people are using it. They also talked about people can get, you know, public transportation sometimes, I mean, if you're in the city or if you're anywhere else, you take a bus, you take it to one location, then you have to hop on another bus to go to another location. So someone saying, you know, Algonquin Township, I can't get to somewhere in Crystal Lake that I want to go to, they can take the bus to Fox River Grove and then take a Fox River Grove bus there, or if PACE, McHenry, the southeast, doesn't meet their needs. But I, what I would, what I would not want to see happen is us offer a program without a funding source tied to it, because it's an additional expense. And I don't, I don't, I don't know where the additional revenue is coming for that when we're trying to constantly budget, you know, balance our budget. We're going to continue to have our increases with our pensions. We've got our FOP contract coming up. We're going to have increases going on that with our union employees. I, I would love to see us publicize it, monitor it a bit, and see if we meet the need at the same time while the county is still doing their conceptual plan, because perhaps that will include more of those things. I'm all for public transportation options, but I don't know that we've publicized them enough to say we should justify making that expenditure.
In March, though, you stated that you were in favor of McRide.
I said I was, I like the program, and I'm more than happy to look into it and look further into it. I was not, I don't know if you're aware, I wasn't that aware of the Southeast McHenry Dial-A-Ride, that we had that option. So I want to, before we jump into that, I don't want to offer something up to our residents and then come back and say, boy, we can't, I'm trying to look at long-term, we, how are we going to keep up with the pension, the rising pension costs in our, we don't have, until we get to a point where we have excess revenue coming in, I'm concerned with bringing on a program that we may not be able to continue.
Those concerns weren't expressed in March, though. You jumped on the bandwagon at the last minute when there were four of us that said we were required.
And I said I'm more than happy to look at it, and I still am more than happy to look at it. I'm not sure where we're at. I think, well, what the goal of this, this meeting is to look at these things and make a determination and see whether or not that's the way to go. I'm just sharing that and looking further with this. I'm just not sure that right now is the time to jump onto it till we get a little bit more information. If we get more information, we find out we have that need and it's not being met, then by all means, I'm absolutely always open to look at that. I want the needs of our residents to be met, and that people can get where they need to go with a public option available for them.
I would note that with, we already tried to inquire from PACE what kind of utilization we're getting. If we do advertise it more, I don't know that we'll be able to get measurable information from PACE, even after we advertise it more. It would be more anecdotal at best from PACE. Algonquin Township apparently does a better job of, or does currently track that. I don't want to say it's a bad job by PACE, but it's currently tracked by Algonquin Township and not by PACE. So moving forward would be a little bit of a challenge to say, we advertise on our websites, we do some more outreach, and we see an increase in utilization on it. I don't know how we'll find that.
But McRide is part of PACE. It's run by PACE. I mean, Mary is part of that, so I mean, isn't McRide part of PACE?
It is, runs differently and separately.
It may be run differently, but it's still under the same umbrella of PACE.
No, I believe it's, it's separate. It's just in partnership with PACE.
Okay, in partnership, okay.
How would you guys market this more so, you know, to seniors and, besides websites and besides Facebook? Some, you know, a lot of people maybe aren't looking things up on the internet or on Facebook, you know, in that age category, and then other people who need to utilize it for other reasons. So what are other ways to market it?
So, what are other ways to market it?
Just off the cuff, our usual methods, like you mentioned, are typical outreach. I think signage at places, if you're, if you are targeting seniors, signage in places that are frequented by them, like the Senior Center, the community room at the new Cary senior apartments, places like that, or any other businesses that would are willing to share that, that information, that signage bulletin boards, the library.
And we do churches, too. I think that there's a lot of churches that are looking for community outreach there. And I just know from a couple of different churches that I, I went to a program at St. Barnabas and know that they're looking for outreach opportunities. You know, perhaps we could reach out to some of the different churches in the area that help with transportation needs for seniors or people with special needs or someone needing a ride for any reason.
So, we could do those things, and like I mentioned, we'll just have to maybe rely on some non-traditional sources of information to try and measure that. But we just wanted to show you the differences here, and obviously, I think it's been highlighted here. The costs are a little bit different, but I think the big differences between the currently available services at MC Ride are the available weekend opportunity services for MC Ride and the shorter notice to arrange your ride. It could be the same day as opposed to a day or more in advance. So, even though there are some duplicate, duplication of services, there are some unique factors to consider that, that we just want to make sure the village board was aware.
Any other comments from this side?
So, McRide's the one that's offering the Saturday only?
Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and weekends. With the other towns that are taking place in that, does it show the data that it's, McRide is more used on Saturday and Sunday? Do we have access to that data or no?
We could look into that with the county.
Yeah, I want to see who's utilizing it, mind right.
Weekend versus weekday and...
Right, because the same thing is there for no cost during the week, by an hour or two, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you're going to go that far, because it has extended hours for people who may work later. Some people work till 4:00 or 5:00, so the 7:00 o'clock time is kind of nice if we can get that data, too.
Yeah, to see the breakdown, because this is cut off from 6:00 to 5:00 p.m. When are people actually using McRide?
Okay, we'll see what we can get from the county.
In a medium impact or low, like we are, it would be kind of...
Maybe in the meantime, come up with a flyer or something that we could drop off at the Senior Center or the Park District or in our front lobby to just try to let people know that there are options out there for them to get a ride. With, you know, PACE Southeast and Algonquin Township, I'm sure that most of the seniors are aware of Algonquin Township. But, you know, we can even put this on our Facebook or Cary News Weekly, hit everybody and maybe spread the word that way as well.
Do we know if PACE has a flyer for their Dial-A-Ride service?
They have their map that shows their different service areas, but specifically for this.
No.
Yeah.
No, we were unable to find anything.
This is one of their older, almost legacy services and routes. That might be why it's not publicized a lot. I guess that is another factor, long-term. It's up to PACE whether or not this continues. But for right now, it is available.
Yes.
No other options on weekends from any other ride service besides McRide?
Private ride-sharing services, obviously.
Right, it's the only one, Uber and taxi.
And a lot of churches, a lot of churches do that. I would, if we get some of this stuff out, I would, I'd be curious to see what type of, you know, if we get some feedback, you know, monitoring what feedback we're getting to from our residents. Because I think getting it out there, if people didn't know about it, they may be thrilled, or they might say, "Hey, this is great, but here's my need." You know, I think it's about educating in both ourselves and all of our residents as to what's available there for them.
I'd just like to see more data when it's being used.
Yep.
Tell a lot, kind of.
Anybody else have any comments about this, so we'll look for continued information from staff? Thank you, Eric.
And Courtney.
And Courtney, I should say, mainly Courtney. I know you pretty much run the show down there, so Eric shows up, right? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss litigation pending or imminent, 120/2C11, personnel collective bargaining, Illinois 120/2C2, personnel appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, and performance, or dismissal of specific employees, Illinois 120/2C1, and close session minutes review, Illinois 120/2C21.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, we will adjourn.
And no names.
Pardon?
No names.